I'll call the city council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Germaine, Lamore, Felder, Whitman, Steelgrave, Vining, Mayor Clark.
Yes, so all please rise to the indication and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
May I just have deliberations and discussions this evening? May our efforts promote the good of the residents of this city and all who visit?
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. One second, please, because we have a work session and still getting paperwork squared away from that. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of regular agenda.
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to amend the agenda to include during council action discussion of the city manager candidates.
Motion by Councilman Lamore. Well, first off, is there any other amendments to the agenda from council? Seeing none, there is a motion from Councilman Lamore, supported by Councilman Felder, to amend the agenda to add under council action discussion regarding the city manager candidates in process.
Counselperson Germaine, Lamore, Felder, Whitman, Steelgrave, Vining, Mayor Clark.
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and for item B, approval of payments, the amount should read $1,708,645.38. 1-7-0-8-6-4-5.38.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Any items on the consent agenda from council? Mr. Pastu?
If, thank you, your honor. If we could pull item number 4,000, which is a resolution spreading expenses of weed and grass cutting, and we've had two, since the agenda went out last week, two payments that came in there, and you have in front of you the updated list of all of the delinquencies. So I'd ask that you pull that out and essentially adopt the list that you have in front of you.
I just want to pull that for the manager. Yes, Councilman Lamore?
I'd like to pull item number 4,000 for further discussion.
Other items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have pulled for further discussion. I know there's quite a few. Seeing none further. Any items on the consent agenda that those present here this evening wish to have pulled for further discussion? Any items on the consent agenda, those present here this evening? Seeing none, motion being ordered. Councilman Felder?
I'd like to make a motion that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, resolutions adopted.
Second. Councilman Felder, supported by Councilman Lamore, that all items on the consent agenda not pulled for further discussion be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, resolutions adopted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Germaine, Lamore, Felder, Whitman, Steelgrave, Vining, Mayor Clark.
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item on the agenda is under Presentations, Communications, and Public Hearings 3994, the Opportunity Center at ALCC 2023 Second Quarterly Report.
Mr. Pastu?
Your honor, just present the quarterly report that came from MCOP at the Opportunity Center.
And that was, we received also by council, I believe, through email as well, the quarterly report, and then an update. So that is a, I guess, a communication at this point. Next item?
The next item is item 3939, Arbor Day, April 28, 2023.
Pastu, any comments? If not, I'll kind of review that. So as we do every year, because we have great partnerships and we are considered a tree city, that Arbor Day is going to be celebrated, and that is going to be celebrated on April 28. There's some communications that should have come to the council. It's going to be conducted over with our forestry division and some department managers at the, at Manor Elementary School. It'll be on the 28th. Send some communication out, and if you have some opportunities and you're scheduled to be there, please do. So I'm not going to read the proclamation here because that'll be read at the time, but of course, it's an opportunity to also recognize naming of Arbor Day and the importance of that with our schools and our youth. It's always a fun day with the students. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item 3996, public hearing budget ordinance 23-001 to receive and review comments on that ordinance, and there are no comments on file in the clerk treasurer's office.
Thank you. Mr. Pastu, any opening comments? If not, we'll go with the public hearing.
No, none, your honor.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing regarding item 3996. It's a public hearing for the budget ordinance 23-001. We're here to receive comments if there's any from those present here this evening. Any comments regarding this public hearing regarding the budget ordinance? Comments from those present. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is under council action. It's item 3976, budget ordinance fiscal year ending June 30, 2024, up for its final reading.
Thank you. Mr. Pastu, I know that we've had work sessions and meetings and some discussion. Any final thoughts or comments for the council regarding the ordinance or review?
Your honor, just, just a little summary. The general fund itself, a little over $21,770,000 in total when you include all of the other funds, it's approaching $69 million. Net out some of the transfers between, you're right around 60, if I said 60,000, I meant 60 million. It, so it, and to keep in mind is that part of it with the general fund, we do a five-year forecast of operations in three years, going out for all of the other operating funds associated with it. And again, part of it is we include the mileage rate in this ordinance as well as staffing. This year, we added a couple of items, adopting the five-year organizational chart for public safety, which is really kind of sets the framework for the five-year forecast, and then also the minimum staffing associated with police and fire operations are incorporated into the ordinance as well.
Thank you. Obviously, we're here for the council action, but if there's any questions from council members for administration, I know Mr. Sell, our finance director, is here as well. If there's any comments or questions for either of them, or we can do it after, too. So this is up for council action, so a motion will be in order. Councilman Lamore?
Thank you, your honor. I make a motion that ordinance number 23-001, the budget ordinance, an ordinance approving the expenditures for the general fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024, after the public hearing and second reading be adopted.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Germaine, on item 3976, budget ordinance fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. Clerk?
I just want to clarify that this is to place it on the floor for the second reading.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying.
Counselperson Germaine?
Yes, Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Steelgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Ordinance 23-001, Budget Appropriation Act, July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2024, an ordinance to approve the budget for the City of Monroe for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024, the City of Monroe ordains.
Shall this ordinance pass?
Counselperson Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Steelgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The next item is item 3998, approval of agreement with impact to lease portion of third floor at City Hall.
Mr. Pastu?
Thank you, your honor. We discussed this at a recent, actually a couple of times, but most recently at our last work session. Administration's recommending approval of agreement with impact to lease approximately 2,350 square feet on the third floor. It would be used for studio production, radio studio, podcast studio, and offices. The agreement sets that the city would have available for impact to begin occupant, occupying or moving in on March 1 of 2024, and then that we'd be moving from the Benish Building on West, I should put, West Fourth, should be West Fifth, and that would be anticipated opening on July 1, 2024. It's a four-year agreement with annual renewal options. The city's consideration that they receive would be up to 450 hours of production support to be used either for short-term video content on the, be posted on the website or Facebook, so, as well as podcasting opportunities for which the city does not have, does not exist at this point in time. So I know last week that Impact Board was here and walked through the proposed lease area and afterwards voted to recommend approval of the agreement as presented to council tonight.
Pastu, any other questions or comments from Councilwoman Felder?
Yes, I just wanted to take this opportunity to brag about Impact and what a wonderful partner they've been over the, over the past several years, and what a wonderful use of space that this is going to be that is currently sitting vacant in City Hall. I'm happy to bring them in, into City Hall, and integrate them into the community that we have here, and hopefully they'll be able to perform their duty and mission a little bit better for that and keep costs under control for what they're trying to do and accomplish for all of us residents here in Monroe, and all of you who are watching at home, compliments of Impact. So it's a wonderful partner that we have here.
Thank you. I think it's a great comment to make because we do have a good partnership, a great partnership, and they've served well for the community to be able to, if you can't be here, you could watch at home. The meetings, it's about having the information provided. I think of how City Hall has used and how we've changed and kind of transformed that over the years, and I think of the LAT service with the transit, when we had a vacancy that occurred in the one part of our building here, and LAT put forward a lot of revenue, federal funds, to facilitate that for those that don't now have to stand outside in the winter and it's freezing, or 90 degrees when it's hot, and the technology that's in there. So it's just another great example, and I agree, Councilman Felder, that, you know, the great partnership and the results to have them here, I think would be beneficial not only to, to Impact but also the service that we, we provide through the impact to the residents. So with that, this is an action item.
Your honor, I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement with impact to lease approximate 2,350 square feet on the third floor of City Hall and authorize the mayor and clerk treasurer to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Steelgrave, item 3998, approval of agreement with impact to lease portion of third floor at City Hall. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Steelgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item on the agenda is item 3997, schedule public hearing drug nuisance property 208 East Seventh Street.
Mr. Pastu?
Your honor, we're recommending scheduling a public hearings, a public hearing for a drug nuisance property located on East Seventh. I'm requesting if Director Tolsted could approach the podium and provide a little background information for City Council, and then afterwards, City Attorney Budz would provide a little legal framework for the action requested in the process going forward. Thank you.
Oh, Mary City Council, Clerk Lavoy, Chad Tolsted, Director of Public Safety, I'll give you a little bit of background on the property 208 East Seventh, and some of the issues that we not just had in the last year but over some period of time. In the last several years, Monroe PD and the Mantis, our drug unit, have received many complaints about suspected drug activity at this residence. Many of your citizens that reside nearby have also made numerous complaints regarding the foot traffic and other things that have gone on around the residence as well. In 2017, vice detectives conducted a search warrant of that residence and found narcotics, paraphernalia, stolen property, all recovered during that search. Between 2016 and 2017, Monroe Police responded to this location six times on overdose complaints, which overdose complaints would imply that someone must possess and then use narcotics within that residence. And over the last year alone, Monroe Police has been dispatched to that residence over 17 times for various complaints ranging from drug, drug search warrants, assaults, suspicious activities, larcenies, and domestic violence calls. In the last two here, the point was on, in December, Mantis conducted a search warrant of 208 East Seventh Street following the investigation where narcotics were purchased from the individuals inside the residence, and narcotics and paraphernalia were recovered from the residence during the search there then after. In less than three months later, I also received complaints from neighbors and neighbors, less, almost immediately, the drug activity picked up after the first search warrant was conducted. Mantis conducted another search warrant of that residence, and they found cocaine from, with the investigation obtained cocaine and owner occupant of the residence, narcotics and paraphernalia were recovered from the residence during the search, and the result of this investigation, the homeowner pled guilty to the charge of one count being maintaining a drug house. So these are just some of the pertinent facts. I know Attorney Matthew Budz can, is going to, I think, advise on the actual ordinance and what this means in terms of a drug, drug nuisance house.
Mr. Budz?
But, your honor, this will be, I think, for some council members, new information, and for some that may have been on the council at the time, a reminder. I think the last that I can recall that we had with this was a property on East Second Street where there was a similar pattern of activity. A reminder that in the ordinance, it states that the city council has the ability to declare a drug nuisance house as a public nuisance by resolution. Prior to any declaration, notice has to be given to the owner in a public hearing held, and a recommendation submitted from the appropriate department. It's our recommendation that that public hearing be scheduled for the next regular city council meeting on May 1, and at that time, Director Tolsted and myself will present information, as well as the property owner, any representatives, or any members of the public, having the ability to make their thoughts or comments known in that hearing as well. A reminder also that there's a persuasive presumption that property is a public nuisance if controlled substances are used, sold, or furnished at that property, and it has been raided by the police, and when thereafter, a letter is sent to the property owner informing them of the activity, and that there will be consequences if similar activity occurs at that property. Such a letter was sent by my office in early 2023 following the December raid. I believe the letter was sent in January, and I will have the details of that if the public meeting, public hearing, I should say, goes forward. And then thereafter, again, the situation recurred again within the following 365 days, which leads to city council being able to determine that as a persuasive presumption of a public nuisance, and at the public hearing, the city council following that will have the ability to declare the property a drug nuisance and ordering appropriate relief, including boarding the property up for up to 365 days. And I'm happy to answer any questions about process or procedure.
Any questions from council to either Director Tolsted or Attorney Budz? Councilman Lamore?
Yeah, this is for Attorney Budz. Just, is there any way of going any faster than what we're doing regarding this? A, and B, the end game to this obviously is boarding the property up for a full year. Is there any possibility of, and I don't want to push this, but demolition of property?
So, your honor, I'll say the first part of the question is about moving it any faster. So the process that needs to happen is that the public hearing needs to get scheduled, and that the owner needs to be provided at least 14 calendar days prior to the date of the public hearing in order for that process to move forward. So we're constrained a bit by the ordinance there. I will say, as soon as we knew the, the second situation has happened, I've been in contact with Director Tolsted and members of his department in order to move that forward. So I think we're a little constrained by that notice provision and bringing it before the council to schedule that public hearing. And then I'll say, the ordinance is fairly specific in terms of saying that it's authorizing the department to prohibit occupancy of the property by either padlocking or boarding up the property for a period of up to one year from the date that council adopted the resolution. Now, I'll say, if there are other, I'll say, situations at the property that there is something that the building department should look at as far as condition of the property, whether it would qualify as a dangerous structure, we're really focused right here now on trying to address the drug nuisance portion, prevent occupancy of that, prevent it from being continued in use in the way that it is, but certainly, there's not anything that would stop other independent investigations of the property for other unrelated issues.
So, so basically, what we're saying is it would not prevent it from happening again? Like, for instance, you're saying up to a year, but it could be a couple of months, or it could be, what is, what is the, the timeframe there? That, how do we specify that timeframe?
So that's a decision that council will make after hearing whatever is presented at the public hearing. That's a council determination. The ordinance specifies that it cannot be more than one year, so that's the maximum amount that the ordinance would authorize is one year. And the other thing that I will say is, following the decision of city council, which is final, there is the ability of a property owner to take appeal to the court process, but that we just want to make sure that any decisions here from city council are based on a proper procedure, hence the public notice having the ability to be heard, is supported by competent material and substantial evidence, and Director Tolsted and I will work on that and have presentation for you at that public meeting, and then represents a reasonable exercise of the discretion granted to city council in the ordinance, which obviously we will encourage all of you to have a reasonable exercise based on the circumstances that you will be presented more information on at the May 1 meeting, if you would schedule that public hearing.
Questions? If not, this is a council action for scheduling the public hearing for the date that's within the content of the fact sheet and item.
Your honor, I'd like to make a motion to schedule a drug nuisance property public hearing for May 1, 2023, at 7:30 PM for the property located at 208 East Seventh Street.
Motion by Councilwoman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Germaine, item 3997, schedule of the public hearing of the drug nuisance property at 208 East Seventh Street for the date and time stated. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Steelgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item was, is item 4,000. It was pulled from the consent agenda. It is the resolution spreading the expenses of weed and grass cutting on the 2023 summer tax roll.
Mr. Pastu, I know you provide some information, just some additional, so we're aware of that, and I know that the clerk has the record for it as well, but if you would.
Just briefly, since the packet went out last 30, last Thursday, we've had two properties pay the delinquent invoices. You have a total of 162 now, and what would happen as adopted is that these invoices would go on the tax bill for this upcoming May tax bill.
Questions from council? If not, it is an action item that's moved to council action?
Your honor, I'll make a motion to accept the proposed resolution from the clerk treasurer authorizing the city assessor to spread the special assessment roll for the expenses of weed and grass cutting fees on the 2023 summer tax roll, and recommending that the resolution be adopted and the changes be placed on the summer 2023 tax roll.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Germaine, on item 4,000 for the, related to the grass and weeds and the resolution as stated. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Steelgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Clerk?
The next item is a discussion of city manager candidates.
Thank you. I was going to look to Mr. Pastu, but he doesn't have the information. So Attorney Budz, I know that we, we had a work session earlier to be part of this meeting. There was a discussion at the work session, and just, I'll just give some information, and you can tell us where, obviously, what, where we're going, but the alternatives were given to the council was a work session. Decisions can't be made at a work session. It can only be made, and motions can only be made at a, at a council They can only be made, and motions can only be made at a council meeting. So, Mr. Buzz, if you would, please.
Your Honor, just by way of background, we obviously had presentation during the work session of options and information as to the status of the search for the next city manager for the city of Monroe. And what we're really looking for at this point in time is direction from the council as to the way that they would like to proceed. And happy to review if you would like further discussion on the options that were discussed, or if there's a motion that any council member wishes to make. Obviously, that could be done as well at this time.
Mr. Buzz, since it was at the work session, or council was there, there were some residents there, but also maybe for those that are here this evening at the council meeting, plus those that are watching, review those options that were presented. And as I said, we don't make decisions or motions at a work session. So through that discussion, and we had, these are the, kind of the choices that are presented to council, unless there's something else the council wishes to make a motion on. You could read those, please.
Yes, Your Honor. The first was to proceed as to both candidates and move forward with the completion of the process that was previously outlined, including background checks for information to be made available to council in terms of the binders that they have had previous access to with the review materials and any background check information, and to move forward with a special meeting on April 24th to discuss council's desires based on having received that information. Option number two would be to narrow the field to one candidate and to focus on one of the two remaining candidates, to then direct the city administration to proceed with negotiations with that candidate and to make that contingent on satisfactory review of any of the background check information. The third option would be to proceed with neither of the candidates that remain in play at this point in time and to use a special meeting scheduled for April 24th to discuss other next steps that would be taken. And option four is any other avenue that council would desire, including any other exercises, information, interviews, or any other information that council would want in order to move that process forward in terms of the selection of the next city manager or any alternatives.
Thank you, Mr. Buzz. Any questions from council on the review for, from council members? So I'll just follow up with a quick comment, and then we'll see where council may be. You know, as we had this discussion at the work session, it was a variety of positions, thoughts from the council, so it was a good discussion. We weren't deliberating, but yet, the various options that were presented, there was kind of some thoughts across the board, which is to tell us that we're all kind of thinking along with what we might find to be either one position or another, or the idea to move forward with the background information. Just a point on that as well, background checks in positions such as this, sometimes a person is offered a position, and then it's pending the background check. Sometimes the background check, like this time, as council proceeded, the background checks were in process already, so they did not get delivered prior to today's meetings. It wasn't intended that they needed to be delivered. It was just that we did provide some other steps in the process along the way with site visits from the two candidates that remain. So I'm just giving that for background for everybody's understanding. So that's why there's different options because of where council may be. I'll entertain any comments that council has first, if there's any comments to the process or anything like to add. I think Mr. Buzz kind of covered that, and I can give a little review. So at this point, it is under council action for council, Councilwoman Lamore?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to include both candidates for city manager in the next step, and include both background checks for the candidates to fully vet both candidates at our next meeting on April 24th.
There is a motion by Councilwoman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Germaine, that I guess I'll just say it was option one that was provided, but it is regarding moving both candidates forward and to receive the background checks, and the date set for April 24th. We don't have a time. We're still checking some calendar items for that. I don't know that we, do we need to set the time at this point?
No, we can set it in either way. Fine to give the direction. I think we'll just need to know what that time is going to be to have that for you at that meeting. But I think it's fine to say the substance along the lines as what was already made by motion.
Since this is not a scheduled yearly meeting, I would say 6:00 PM would be appropriate.
You know, we could, we could set the time, but the same position, we a lot of times will poll council members on the off-meeting nights because schedule's permitting, but I guess I'm looking, Mr. Buzz, you can set it, or should we set it and then make the adjustments later?
We'll leave that to the discretion of council, and I hate to say that.
It is our decision, of course.
The motion that's on the floor is the substance of what you want to have happen moving forward, and I think that's fine. It has been stated that it will occur on April 24th. So the only thing that we would need then is either confirmation through the process of setting a special meeting through the clerk's office, or whether that be in a separate motion here tonight. I don't really, I don't have a strong preference either way. It's just we'll have to come up with that time at some point so that the public gets informed of the time of that special meeting.
Before I see if there's going to be amendment to the motion with the time, I want to speak, have the clerk, of course, if there's no time set, if just what the process would be to make sure the residents understand how and when it gets posted.
So I would need a motion at some point, I believe, to satisfy the requirements that I have with me through, with myself through charter, and then we'll post the meeting online as well as here at City Hall.
Okay.
So tonight, we're establishing that there will be a meeting on April 24th, and the question will just be the time.
Okay. But Councilwoman Lamore says 6:00 PM, and of course, it would require a second, the second or to say that, but I see there's inquiry. So Councilwoman?
Your Honor, question for you. Would it be appropriate to schedule a special meeting first and then make the motion, or?
No, I think that, go ahead. This might be an attorney question. You're setting the motion to have this follow-up meeting regarding the city manager candidate selection for April 24th. And I know that's been discussed in the past.
So I want to make sure we hit both the substance of what council is desiring and also the scheduling aspect to it, which I don't mind if that's all in one motion, or whether that's in separate motions. What we, what I don't want to see happen is the substance to be set without then a time for when we're going to have that meeting. So to say we're going to make a motion and set a special meeting for that time, then we need to follow through with a second action to make sure we set the time, or do it all in one amended motion, I think is either of those.
I'd like to amend my motion to include 6:00 PM as a set time.
And she's saying, okay, before we take a vote, because I know Councilman Felder has his hand up, so we'll get his thoughts here.
Yes, sir, I have a comment on the motion. I had discussed this previously at the last meeting with the city manager, and also previously today, discussing a conflict I have at 6:00 PM on the 24th. I'm available on the 24th. I am not available on the 24th at 6:00 PM, and my support of the motion is contingent upon it being, upon the meeting being at a time which I am available. So there's your substance coming into conflict with the schedule.
What time are you available?
Anywhere between 9:00 AM and 2:00 PM.
Can't do it.
Let's see, there's those that can't make that timeframe. So, you know, council meetings, we usually have that we, I can't say we don't have day meetings. We do periodically, but when we have special, this is a special meeting, correct?
A meeting on the 24th would be a special meeting.
Is what's being proposed. And we've met as early as 5:00 and as late as 7:30. I don't know that we've ever started later. This is kind of the timeframe. I mean, this is, we've been down this when we started this process with a timeframe that didn't work, and then also imposed on others when it didn't work. So.
Would it be appropriate to basically solicit a date that everybody would be available, like maybe potentially this upcoming Saturday? Is that too soon?
Well, this, 133 days, I think I heard in our work session, for this process to take. The process has been extended because we've not met on days, and it's continuing along. As we all know, our city manager is retiring from the position. Obviously, as long as we'd love him to stay, he has other items that he has needed, that he needs to attend to as well. And his end date was the end of the month. He's more than willing to, I'll say, carry over for a couple of weeks or so as we try to hopefully select the city manager and put together a contract agreement, which is going to take time with, then, so I think time is of the essence. I don't think we have other times and days. We usually meet on Mondays. That's what kind of when we do. I don't know, I mean, we have a council person that has a conflict, but, you know, we change that and have three conflicts, and that, or two conflicts, or another conflict. It just, it will continue, so.
Saturday is wonderful for me.
Well, but I don't even know what day that is, and the time is what it is. I'd have to check myself, as everybody would. When we send out, when we send out these meetings, when we don't have a set date and time, we'll poll the council that requests for availability other than a date. That's why we do it here at this meeting to hopefully resolve it. And even then, I'm not sure when the date would be. Then it requires other action by council to come to consensus. I'm not sure. I can tell you, as May comes along, there's going to be more conflicting dates for me than there is through this month. Other comments?
I'm more than willing to amend to a different date. If it's the Saturday, I just, my issue with it is not knowing what everybody else's timeline is. I'm more than willing to set aside time for this because I think it is probably the most pertinent action we can take as city council members, and we should get this done before the end of the month to allow our city manager to do his wishes at the end of the month. And, you know, take the action now and get this done with, we have taken a long time to come to this moment, and we need to come up with a decision, and I think it needs to come within the week here for certain. If not Monday night, Tuesday night, Saturday, I'm open any day.
Your Honor? Councilwoman Vining?
My schedule is very flexible, so whatever works. I think it's important that we all be here. And I know we've taken 133 days, but I don't think we should feel pressured about it. If we need to find another day, let's work it out and find another day. Let's talk about our availability right now and figure it out.
Okay, so if 24th is not going to work for a council person, then I guess we might just go day by day. I will start by saying that in April, on the 24th, 5th, 6th, and 7th, there are various committees and commissions that are meeting. Another item that Mr. Pastu is trying to finalize before he goes, all the committees and commissions that are set, that they get their final direction from, the work that's been done over the past year or two. So I will say the 6:00 timeframe is not going to work, whether it be the 25th, 26th. And if it's the 27th, then I would change my schedule and not go to the, a different council that I serve on for the city. So I'll start there and looking at 25th or, Mr. Pastu?
What about earlier, later this week? If there's any days, whether it's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
I know there's a meeting by the Ethics Board at 5:00. Does, I mean, we can do that, and of course, you're a part of that, so it wouldn't matter. So we're looking.
Your Honor, is there a timeline we have to announce, like a week prior to this meeting, or are we?
Well, clerk has the keeper of that, the timeline we have to do to post.
18 hours.
18 hours.
Thank you.
Hold any time that you pick. End date. We also have to make sure that the information that we're asking is here, and we don't know when it's going to come. So we could set it for Thursday, but what if the information isn't here, then we have to reschedule again. So I'll start there, if, looking at Thursday, the 20th on councils.
Oh, I thought we were in the final.
Well, I figure we'd start every day that's on the calendar and see where we say yes or no. But on the other hand, you know, we set it for the 20th, and then the information doesn't arrive, then we're right back where we started. So we have to make sure we have sufficient days to meet. Go ahead, Councilwoman Lamore?
Ms. Everly would like to bring forth her thoughts on that.
Director, Dr. Everly?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. In reference to the background checks arriving for your review, if necessary, I certainly would be willing to take a trip to the investigation agency to pick up that copy if they can't be expedited here through other means. So you set your date, we'll make sure that they get here and that you have time to review them.
Very well. So I'll go back to the 20th, looking at council members.
I can do the 20th.
The 20th at 6:00?
Councilwoman Vining?
Yes.
Councilwoman Whitman?
Fine, I'm open.
Okay, it appears that the 20th, which is this coming Thursday, obviously, it'll shorten the time in which council has to review the background checks, so that might be something we have to incorporate within our meeting and set time for that to be able to look through that and have questions since it won't be here. So, well, there's a motion and a second on the floor, and it would require.
I need to amend my motion to include the date.
You want to rescind the motion you have?
I want to ask a question too before we set the date.
Sure.
Can we still look at our binders during that meeting?
Yes, yes.
On the 20th?
Yes.
All right, then I'm good, thank you.
So you want to, is your motion to withdraw your, the current motion on the table?
Just amend the date to April 20th at 6:00 PM. Is that what you'd like to see, or you want me to rescind the motion?
It'd be cleaner if we just did that.
Rescind the motion that I proposed, and I'll.
Well, I got to make sure the second supports that.
I support that.
Okay, the motion that was on the floor is no longer active, so now we still have this action item for a motion, Councilwoman Lamore.
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to include both candidates for city manager in the next step, and include both background checks to fully vet both candidates at our next meeting Thursday, April 20th at 6:00 PM.
Here at City Hall.
Here at City Hall.
And there's a motion by Councilwoman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Germaine, to set the date to follow up regarding the city manager search. Any final comments from council? See you in, Councilman Felder?
Yes, just one final one. I understand it is unfortunate that the days did not arrive. I did, however, let the city manager know the same day that it was announced, and I'm a bit surprised that we did not begin pursuing alternative scheduling options until just now. So although I apologize for the inconvenience, I did take steps to prevent this.
Let you say that, I'll have to say this. We have to be flexible on council with our personal schedules. I can think of many people on council here who have changed their schedules and personal appointments. When you serve on a council, you have to, I understand it's personal, whether it be family or otherwise, but trying to get this done in a fashion, and then having it on a Thursday is a day that's not normally held. We usually do them on Mondays, though we've done Saturdays as well. But we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Steelgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Clerk?
I have no further items this evening, Your Honor.
It's April, Councilwoman Germaine.
All right, thank you, Your Honor. I don't think it's, I was going to mention this anyway, but now it's more informative. It's no easy task to replace Vince, and we all take it very seriously, and we have to pick the right one because no one can replace Vince. That's first. I'm also excited about the social district that's about to happen, and it's coming to fruition, so that makes me very happy, and I'm sure there'll be more restaurants to follow. That's all, Your Honor.
Councilwoman Lamore?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to back up Councilwoman Germaine on that regarding our search for city manager, and thank Dr. Everly for everything she's done in this process. She's made it very easy for us to basically connect the dots, so I really appreciate that a lot. Also, want to reflect on some things. I was gone at the last meeting, I apologize for that, but I did discover some things while I was gone, just how beautiful the city we have here. It's nice, it's quiet compared to where I was at, and I can tell you, driving 20 miles and taking over an hour to get there is something we don't have to worry about here in the Monroe County. So it's wonderful being home again and being able to drive with that freedom. Another note, I'd just like some more information, if I could, regarding the old Lazy Boy property. Another note, I'd just like some more information if I could regarding the old Lazy Boy property. I know that there's some things going in in front there. Do we have any kind of information as to how that's going and how soon we should expect any of those places to open out front?
Sure. Honorable Mayor, City Council, Mark Cochran, Economic and Community Development Director. So I guess a couple updates related to the three-unit commercial development. I get asked about every other day when Chipotle is opening. It's my understanding based on their building permits, they're waiting for some mechanical equipment that's on back order and that's, that's the cause of the delay. I don't have an anticipated open date at this point. I know the middle unit on that development has also been rented out by SBS Vision. They've applied for permits and moving through, working with their contractor in the Building Division. The third unit, I'm not aware of any finalized agreement on that unit as well. Hopping across Holiday, still can't say publicly officially who's building there. I do anticipate getting site plans for the remainder of the entire Lazy Boy site except for the property east of Huber Drive, hopefully by the end of the month, except for two parcels. So one immediately behind Dairy Queen and the one immediately behind where Chipotle is going in. So we're anticipating that. I know the agreements are in their final stage with the developer and the tenants.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that update.
You're welcome.
And on that note, I will turn it over to Councilman Felder.
Thank you, Councilman Felder.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd certainly want to thank Dr. Everly for facilitating this process and keeping her door open to me. I've certainly taken advantage of her expertise on this issue. She has a long history in professional work experience dealing with these sorts of issues and we are very lucky to have her here and rely on her capabilities and professionalism. So I'm certainly happy to have her aboard. Art in April is coming up on April 27th, going to be downtown in the evening. Hope everyone is able to make it out for that and support our local businesses. Workers Memorial Day is on April 28th. I plan on bringing a resolution, I'll put together a resolution for the council for their approval at the next meeting. I hope to submit that. I've reviewed that with the city manager as well. Knowing the history of this community, we've had several officer-involved shootings in the past and one county deputy unfortunately that passed away while on duty. And I think that there are people at work who give to this community, who deserve some recognition for that. So I'll be bringing that up at the next meeting. Arbor Day on the 28th, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for announcing that. I will plan on being there. I have been in the last several years and wouldn't you know, it's my son's school now too. Generation E is going to, Generation Entrepreneur is going to be at Monroe High School on April 29th. And then of course, Cinderella is going to be at the River Rays and Center for the Arts the 28th, the 29th, and the 30th. It's their spring ballet this year. I hope everyone is able to make it out. Thank you, sir. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Whitman?
Yes. I hope everyone finds a way to stay warm. I am very disappointed in the weather, but I also wanted to ask about the parks and where we're at and.
You know, I think, and I'm just going to give you a prelude, but one of the things I was planning on for the 24th was to give you a big wrap-up of all of these projects, where we are with Lazy Boy, some of the economic development projects, the construction projects and particularly, you know, Carnes Park and that type of thing. So, you know, I'll look to find another date to give a wrap-up for you sometime in May. But, you know, Carnes is proceeding, they slowed down a little bit here with the weather change and rain and what have you, but I still think they're anticipating a late summer opening for the, for the parks, so.
Very good. And I have one other question. Are we still going to get a dog park?
Well, I know Mark is still working on that a little bit. It's like everything else, we've had probably five, six, seven different possible sites, but I think one that, that we've been looking at and we'll include that as part of the wrap-up meeting as well, so.
I'm satisfied. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilwoman Stelgrave?
This Friday kicks off the first of what they're calling the third Fridays in downtown Monroe. I have to read it because I don't know much about it here, but the downtown shops and restaurants are staying open late. There's going to have giveaways, special guests and refreshments, and this is going to go every third Friday of every month from now till December. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vining?
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to ask about the Navarre Library project because Mark, I think you said you guys are going to have a meeting.
It was last, supposed to be last week. Got postponed. We'll try and get that back on track.
And then, since I have some members of the traffic, of the.
Traffic committee here, the seniors over at the senior center over at Opportunity Center, maybe, maybe about a year ago wrote a letter to the traffic committee requesting that those parking cutouts in the front get some time limit signs there. And I think I was under the impression that the traffic committee had approved it, but I'm not sure. So I wanted to get some understanding on that. They always asked you about it, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I know. I want to have to, I'll go back and look at the meetings and see if it was presented. I know that we're having a traffic committee meeting next week and if that's, we can find some background that the committee did that, then we'll bring it back to their awareness. If not, we'll bring it to their awareness. Thank you.
If I may, Your Honor, just, I'm looking at Patrick and he's kind of like not giving me an affirmative, he has any recollection of it. Are we looking at like time limited parking in front on East Chester?
Yes, during the times of the senior center, which is 10 to 2, I believe. And sometimes the seniors are having to park all the way around in the, in the parking lot.
Is it just dedicated for seniors? Or is it?
During their program because other people may be parked in those spaces during the time that the senior center is open. I hate to say, it's probably been a year since they requested it and.
We'll look into it though.
Okay, thank you.
And that's, that's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. I have some comments. I'm just, I'm trying to think that through because I'm trying to help we manage the time for the seniors if other, and if the others, and I'm not sure we can have just senior parking, but I'm, we're going to find out where it's at.
Yeah, we had some sort of conversation. Sorry, Patrick, I thought it was with you. And we kind of kicked that around a bit about how, because say after the senior hours, there's not a lot of traffic there, there's not a lot of parking being utilized there until late in the evening. So we talked about maybe finding some timeframes, like maybe no parking here from nine to three or, or something like that.
We'll have to chat box, you have no parking and there's no parking. It can't be selective, selective parking, but I think we can talk it through, see where it's at.
Okay.
All right, thanks. I appreciate it.
Well, we don't want no parking. That's not what I'm suggesting.
I know.
That's not what I'm asking.
I know.
I guess we can't have restricted parking and say only senior citizens can park here. Is that what, is that what you're saying?
We'll come with something, we'll see for the conversation. Sounds good.
I'll report back because I get asked about this pretty regularly. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a couple, just announcements. I know that Councilman Felder mentioned the art in April, which is coming up on the Thursday, the 27th, and I hope that residents have an opportunity to come down because there, there will be stores opening up. But they're also, one of the particular stores is also kind of pairing on that same day because it's kind of a downtown showcase and what's part of the art in April activities because they've selected that night, just to kind of, kind of piggyback on it. But the Monroe Community College Art Club, the kind of young art, local artists from the community college are going to specifically have their art displayed there at Agua Dulce, at the, at the coffee and tea shop, and they'll be there from 5:30 to 8:00 PM. But really, the art display is an opportunity to kind of walk through the community, through the downtown and see the artwork that's being displayed, but also recognize all the great talent that we have in the community. The other item I have is Earth Day is coming up as well, which is Saturday, April 22nd. It's going to be at the Monroe County Community College from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. I know they're going to have a speaker, but also they have some other awards and drawings that they do for all the great work that's done through the Earth Day projects, it'll be educational exhibits, literacy school projects, activities, food trucks, music, and just a fun day for the family out at the Monroe County Community College. Those are my comments for this evening. Clerk Treasurer LaVoy?
Just a couple of announcements. A reminder to the members of the council who will be at the public accuracy test. The public accuracy test is an open meeting of the election commission where we publicly test the election equipment that will be used on May 2nd. And so just a reminder, I will send a reminder email. It will be at April 25th at 7:30 here at, 7:30 AM here at City Hall. And then the special election is May 2nd, so there is still time to get absentee ballots or to, if you, if you've put in an application or still are in need of one, contact the office. The members of the Clerk Treasurer's office team have been working really hard to get those ballots back out into the mail as soon as we get a request and we are, we are able to continue to mail those up until the Friday before the election. So if you'd like one mailed to you, please make sure that you contact us. And those, you can either call our office and we'll work with you or those applications to get about are also available online.
Clerk LaVoy, just one clarification. I just want to make sure we have an election commission meeting on April 25th at 7:30 AM.
It's the public accuracy test.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. That's all I have.
Next, city manager Pastu?
A couple items. So, Your Honor, if Mark Cochran wanted to address a letter that went out related to riding bikes in the downtown?
Good evening again. Director Tolstad and I previously, about last month I think it was, had a great meeting with Chip Williams, who's the Chair of the Downtown Monroe Business Network, about some of the concerns that business owners and property owners have in the downtown about folks who are riding bikes and scooters and other wheeled vehicles on the sidewalks downtown, where of course, it's prohibited by city ordinance. So now that the weather is getting nicer, we just wanted to remind everybody that it is prohibited in downtown for the, primarily for the safety of the employees and the visitors in our downtown and all the pedestrians who walk on the sidewalks. And so this morning, a letter went out that was signed by Director Tolstad and myself and Chip Williams, as well as William Slicker, the Chair of the Downtown Development Authority, talking to business owners, reminding them if they see habitual offenders to contact the police department and that can be addressed. But also, as you're moving throughout your, your day and your business, if you see somebody, just remind them that it's, it's not permitted and they need to ride appropriately where legal. And also, there'll be some signage coming out in the downtown, not only about the social district boundary, but also continuing the Walk Your Reels program and the promotion that we, that we started last year in partnership with the Downtown Monroe Business Network as well. So just a reminder, as it's getting nicer out, to not ride your bike on the sidewalk throughout the downtown.
Anything to add?
I'd just like to add, it's been a great partnership working with Mark Cochran and the other, Chip Williams, that we as a public safety department, we're putting out PSAs for the public, so it won't be just, you know, hey, we're going to stop issuing tickets. We're going to put out PSAs beginning this month and start some more directed enforcement areas in the beginning of May when, when the weather starts getting nice and help educate our public on the, in the, in the reasons why we don't want the bicycles on the sidewalk, which was a safety concern, so.
Councilwoman Vining?
Do you guys have, do we have bike lanes in the downtown area?
So we do not currently. I know that's looked at as part of the Downtown Monroe Master Plan and, and other items about how we can make it include some bike lanes. Currently, we do, we don't though.
So I guess a follow-up to that is of course, the Bike and Ped and Trails Committee that's being formed, their first meeting is coming up next week, one of those four committees that'll be done here in April. And that's besides the opportunities to expand where that is about, about the markings and lane usage, whether it be shared lanes. And I know that'll be part of the discussion they have with that new advisory committee.
And that's a discussion that we had with Mr. Williams, recognizing the long-term solution is adding bike lanes and, and other non-passenger vehicle lanes in the downtown. But until then, until we get that done, just reminding people to be cognizant of all the ways people travel throughout the downtown, whether it's bikes on the roadways and vehicles, being more careful, watching out for everybody and traveling safely on the sidewalks downtown as well.
Thank you.
Also, I just wanted to remind council too, the first mural went up this weekend at 13:30 East First Street, the Monroe Community Ambulance Building. This is the one that we discussed at the last city council meeting, so I believe it was finished late Sunday night. There are some final touches to be added, so if you'd like to take a drive by and take a look at it, it's exciting to see more to come. So thanks for your support.
Thank you. So with your comments, I just, before Ms. Pastu, I get to your next one, you know, the Art in April, as we talked about, it's the Downtown Monroe Business Network that champions that and brings it forward and organize it. So my thanks to the DMBN for the work they do there. Ms. Pastu, other comments?
Yeah, the other item, Your Honor, is a follow-up from our last regular meeting. Ms. Pisonic had expressed her request to have the city council rescind the open fire ordinance that was adopted a little over two years ago, maybe two and a half years ago. And so I know the following day, Director Tolstad had sent information related to the ordinance and information not only to council, but Ms. Pisonic, and I spoke with her late last week, saying I'd bring it up for discussion with council, that they wanted to approach rescinding it, although I would recommend against it. I think by and large, you know, we've had pretty good support for it and, and most of the time we've had, I shouldn't say most of the time, just about all the time, we've had residents be responsible with the fire itself, you know, in a controlled environment. And the public safety department has followed up when complaints have been issued. And so, you know, with that, I did share that with her. Obviously, she wasn't happy with my recommendation, but at the same time, I think, you know, it has been good policy and, and by and large, well-received by responsible residents in the city, so.
So, thank you, Mr. Pastu. So I'll ask council if there's any questions for him regarding the, the ordinance, it's 21-004, regarding the recreational fires and portable outdoor fireplaces. Any comments from council? Any, any wishes or desire to amend the policy in any fashion? I did have a chance to look through it again and there are items in here that are shalls and shall nots. Councilman Lamore?
Thank you, Your Honor. Not really anything regarding the ordinance, but just our residents, just to, you know, pay attention to your neighbors, make sure you're not disturbing them by creating a nuisance. And if it is a nuisance situation, that's when our public safety department comes into action and takes care of the situation. So try to be neighborly. This ordinance is meant to give you more freedoms, so don't take advantage of them. That's about the best I can say to that. Because I do think it is a good ordinance and I think we need to find a way to, a solution amongst our neighbors to figure out how to get along with each other when it comes to such an ordinance and, and allowing these freedoms. So, you know, just be, be cognizant of your neighbors.
Other comments from council? We're not, we're not, we'll get to that next. Yeah, you bet, absolutely. Okay. Ms. Pastu, anything further?
No, that's all I have, Your Honor.
Very good. So next is citizens' comments, and at this time, if there's those that would like to speak, just be mindful of the chambers rules, please. Please state your name and jurisdiction of residence in three minutes and if there's any comments from those present here, yep, please come forward.
I love my city. We have a beautiful city, Monroe. And I did talk with Vince and yeah, I wasn't happy with what he said. He wasn't going to go back to the original ordinance, but I took it upon myself to talk to the people who live on my street, Arbor Avenue, from Elm to Lorraine and just the street on the east and west side of the street, just that amount, okay? So on the first block on Elm Street, onto Arbor, I only got to talk to, you know, a few people, a lot of them weren't home, but it was on a Saturday. A lot of them weren't home, but it was on a Saturday, and it was 12 people. And it's households, so their kids are living in there. And their concern is that you can't leave your windows open. The one guy said that he, you know, he's a resident. He woke up and he smells his clothes. And you can't control your neighbor's smoke or a block away. Or, you know, the smoke goes all over the place, and we don't like it. Because a lot of these residents, and, well, I talked to also people on the other block, and I got 14 people, that these are all against this smoke. And that's what it is, the burning, you can call it burning, but it's smoke. It creates smoke, and it kills people. My poor neighbor, Carlos Mendez, he's really sick. It's with his lungs. And he hasn't been able to sit outside and enjoy his life, which is, he's really sick. You know, he's a death story. I hate to say it, but... And our city council made it possible for him to stay indoors. He couldn't go outdoors because of the smoke. People don't have respect for their neighbors when it comes to the smoke. They have no control over it. They light it, it burns, it goes up in the air, and it'll land all over the place, all over the neighborhood. 10 houses, 20 houses down, one fire pit can destroy the neighborhood. And these people I'm talking to, they're very sick. They have lung problems, CO, what is it called, POCD, asthma. They don't want their children breathing the smoke. They can't go outside and play. Smoke gives people, it's a PM2. It's microparticles that gets into your eyes, your respiratory system, causes heart disease, asthma, COPD, lung cancer. It's all increase of the risk of death, all organs. You know, you just start, even your hair falls out. You just get sick from breathing smoke. You're not supposed to breathe it. It's not good for our bodies. And so I told all the people that I have their names and addresses, and that I would be talking, you know, for them. They want it stopped. This is not a recreational, fun thing to do with your children, even. If they're around a fire, you're exposing them to a hazardous, it's a bad thing. It's bad for their brains, and especially the newborns. All the beautiful people that I got to see, see their babies. These are families. Was it three minutes up?
You're at four minutes.
Oh, well, thank you. And then, right here, it says that the fires must be extinguished when you have a complaint, and they don't do it. Because I've had lots of complaints that I have called in, four or five, and the smoke invading my house.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments from those present here this evening?
All right, I'll try to get it.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. I have with me...
Your name, sir, please. Your name, please, and your...
Jeffrey Town Campbell. I live at 1128 East Front Street. And I have several pictures. I don't know if I can bring these up to you, or if somebody can bring these up to you.
If there are things you want council to see later, just give them to the clerk, please. Ms. Pisonic? Ms. Pisonic? Thank you.
Yeah, I understand.
Well, anyways, I live on Front Street, right off of the Hellenberg Boat Launch. We were in the park yesterday, just recently, yesterday. And there were, we were over on the island. And there were several fires in there, from bonfires, from people having them. We called the city police, and they came out and took care of the situation yesterday for that. But then, we walk this park almost daily, and the homeless have taken over the island. And they are taking over the stretch where the Little League Field used to be, along the railroad tracks. They have started building huts in there, mud huts. This guy's really good on how he does them. But they're good-sized. And it's, this one's been there about two years now. Jack, I don't know what happened to him. He was here a few months ago, now he's gone. He was a nice man. And there is trash. It looks like there is 20 people leaving in this two-person hut. There is trash absolutely everywhere. It would be, Front Street would be this side of Front Street, you know. They're starting to dump, people are dumping shingles. You'll see all these in my pictures. There's shingles being dumped in the park now, roofing shingles. There's all kinds of trash just being dumped along the tracks, on the park side, on the empty field side, the fires that are going on in there. We've called the police, and we don't know what's going on with all that. But we've called them numerous times. We've caught, and on our camera system, I have a 14-camera system on my house, because I'm on the east side. We've caught prostitutes coming out of there. We've got their duties on camera. We've got drug dealers right on the corner of East Chester and Front. You know, we got these big yellow concrete things where they block the street off. They're sitting on there, they're doing their drugs, they're doing their prostitutions. We don't know what to do. We've called, they're still out there. The residents last night that were reported for this fire, we understood that they were given tickets and were asked to leave the area. Well, on our way in here tonight, they were back in there. So I don't know. I guess, I know we have a big homeless problem on our side of the neighborhood, but we're gonna have to fix something. So that's all I've got.
All right, Mr. Councilman, thank you.
And a lot of my pictures will show you everything I've...
And the clerk will make sure that you get disseminated to the council members. I know that Director Tolstead's here. If you, before you depart today, if you could just take some additional time to chat with him.
Okay.
Sitting at the wall there.
Thank you.
Director Tolstead. And see if there's other things, information he can take from you, or some thoughts about this.
Well, we came last year a couple times and reported this. Because I think it's, well, me and my husband are closest to the park and probably use most of it by ourselves, but, you know, we'd still like our park clean.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Before the conclusion of the meeting, Mr. Cochran and Director Tolstead would like to, they're aware of the situation, and can give you an update before the conclusion of the meeting.
Very well. First, I'll see if there's other comments from those present here this evening. Further comments from those present here this evening? Okay. I guess, Mr. Pestoo, if you, just an update and a follow-up to Mr. Campbell, and then Mr. Towne Campbell, and see if there's other things that we can do. But still make sure you make contact before you depart tonight, okay? Thank you.
I'm your mayor, City Councilmember, Clerk LeBoye. Chad Tolstead, Director of Public Safety. Mr. Campbell, correct? Yeah, it is absolutely correct. So we were out there yesterday. We did issue tickets for, it was two people out there having an open campfire. Tickets were issued to them. They tried to deny that it was them, but we found evidence that it would indicate that it was them. They've been asked to be moved out of there several more times. I certainly will add some directed patrols, given this new information that Mr. Campbell's provided us tonight, to keep that park clean, keep that park safe, keep the drug activity out of there, including the prostitution that Mr. Campbell has indicated. We do have homeless shelters and things like that to direct them to, which I'm sure my officers have directed them to as well. So whatever we can do to be assistance to Mr. Campbell and to make sure that park stays safe, we will certainly do so. And I'll have an officer go to, officers go down there tonight and check on it. Only thing additionally, we are looking to recourse against the possible people that keep on repeating this violation, as far as trespassing them and keeping them out of the park. I'll have to speak with the prosecutor's office to see if that's something we can keep them out of a public park and trespass them from them, since it is public, public property, so.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Okay.
Your Honor.
Oh, Ms. Pestoo, yes, Councilman Lamore.
Just, I was just gonna ask one more question regarding that. We're talking about Sterling Island, correct? Okay. Is there a way of shutting that? Because I'm assuming that's where a majority of the problem occurs, or is it in Hellenberg Park in general? I'm just trying to figure it out, because if there is a way of shutting off Sterling Island, I mean, barricading it somehow?
Recollection serves me. I thought at one time we may have.
Yeah, I mean, the habitual problem, at least over the past week, and I'll say, as the complaints get brought in, we've been made aware of some of the encampments and shelters that have been built on Sterling Island. Police notify us, and our parks crew do go out and remove those. They come back a day later, and so Director Tolstead, we're working with him on recourse. We don't want to close off the whole island to the public. We know there's other people who'd like to enjoy it. I'm sure Mr. Campbell is one of them. And so we don't want to close off access as a way to deter this. But it's something that we've talked about in looking at other courses of action that we can take, short of closing it off to all public access for that purpose.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you both. So at this time, if there's no other comments, motion to adjourn. It's a motion by Councilman Lamore, supported by Councilman Felder, to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Lamore? Felder? Whitman? Steelgrave?
Yes.
Vining? Mayor Clark?
Yes. Thank you all for being here this evening.